May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on September 11th, 2025, in compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on August 25th, 2025. The Daily Record, the Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video-on-the-go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. We are going to have the salute to the flag and after the pledge, if you'll just please join me in a moment of silence to honor the courage of those who died and the heroism of our first responders, because this is 9/11 and, you know, it's been 24 years. So first we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we have the attendance roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham.
Here.
Mr. Barrios.
Here.
Mrs. Delafave.
Here.
Mr. DeVito.
Here.
Mrs. Mayer.
Here.
Mr. Raya.
Here.
Dr. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Chappell.
Here.
Mrs. Cogan.
Here. We are up to student committee reports, and we have two new students for the start of the school, new school year. Yay. Ashida, would you like to start for the Hills?
Hi, my name is Ashida Patel, and I'm the Board of Education representative for Parsippany Hills High School. So, a bit about myself, I like to volunteer. I volunteer at the Hackensack Hospital, the ESL Summer Camp at Parsippany High School, and a nursing home in Montville. So, a few things happening at our school. So, on the first day of school, September 2nd, the marching band did perform for us on the patio. An upcoming event we have is freshman fun night, which is on September 22nd. That's just a night hosted at our school where freshmen can play games, eat food, and get to know each other a little bit more. Some of the games include charades, lip sync battle, cup stacking race, and Parsippany Hills trivia. And this event is run by and set up by the board and the staff members. As for athletics, we have a girls' tennis match at Moorestown today and a boys' soccer game at Montville. As for rules, our principal is trying to implement a policy, the ID policy. He wants the IDs on all times during the school day for staff and students for extra safety precautions. As for upcoming events, we are trying to still revise them, but we have the senior sunrise and the fall pep rally. We're still trying to implement new ideas and revise them before we, you know, actually make up the new things for the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarvash, hi?
Hello. My name is Sarvash, and hopefully you are all doing well. Thank you for having me here today. As the PHS representative for Board of Education liaison, I am here to share with you updates on the latest happenings at our school. Today, I would like to talk about our school's club fair, picture day, and the guidelines presentation held for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. The club fair was an excellent experience for nearly all students in PHS. It's time when students get to join clubs they find interesting and exciting. Many freshmen and new students were eager to get involved. Overall, the student reception was great. Secondly, I would like to talk about picture day. Picture day was great, and the wait lines to take pictures moved quickly. Picture-taking process was also swift. In general, everything went well. Finally, I would like to talk about the guidelines presentation. The guidelines presentation discussed student expectations, the late policy, absences, and the importance of wearing an ID. Unfortunately, the presentation wasn't very well received amongst many of the students. They felt the unexcused absence policy was unjust, and having the meeting take place during lunch was a bit annoying. I feel it is important that the board knows about the news from the perspective of the students. That is, that is all I want to discuss with you. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our students? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to do a committee, Committee of the Whole for the Transportation Committee. The chair is Mrs. Abraham. Would you like to start your committee meeting?
Sure, thank you. Welcome, everybody. So, we're having a Transportation Committee of the Whole. We do have our friend Tiffany here to help us out with all the information on this agenda. So, we'll get right to it. And first, we're going to talk about STA routes for this year.
Okay. So, for the start of the year, we have, so we have two bids with STA. One of them has 81 routes on it, the other one has five. We've had them, we've been renewing them. We were able to take three routes back this year. We were able to combine them. So, that should save us about $167,000, which is good. The smaller bid is for VOTEC. That one, we still have five routes on, but we did take one of the routes, and it does go to CCM now, which saved us the route in the morning to CCM, which is good. We had a nice opening. We really didn't have any problems. Everything went really well. STA was actually really great. So, everything's smooth with them and going well. Made little changes, but nothing major. So, that's good.
Thank you. Would you be able to talk about the Parsippany routes?
Okay. So, our Parsippany routes, all of our drivers are back. Morning and afternoon, we have 16 routes for different high schools, five, because we have, we have, we also do Roxbury, we do Morris Hills ourselves. We took all those back a couple of years ago. So, we have 16 high school routes, five middle school routes, 19 elementary routes, and five pre-K routes that we tier so that we can get them all done in the morning and the afternoon. Midday, we have 19 routes, pre-K, VOTEC in and out with the shared time kids. And we have eight people assigned to work programs for the start and special ed programs. So, that's throughout our day. So, everybody's super busy, keep them busy, and all of our routes are, again, worked really well this year, seemed to be good. Full, crowded, but good. So, that's good. If anyone has...
How were the pre-K? No problems with the pre-K routes?
No, it actually works out very well. It actually is working out well. I was a little nervous. We were gonna, it was new, so it took a little explaining, because nobody understood why they were going to Littleton, but it was working out really well. We only go to Littleton at midday, so that works out okay. No, it's all been okay.
Thank God. Orientation for secondary schools?
So, we had orientation for high school that Wednesday before school, and then Thursday for middle school. We used to pay STA to come and do the routes for us. It's about $12,000 every year. Some of the routes have like two sixth graders on them and two ninth graders. So, we just started taking our routes and pulling them off and just making our own little route for middle, like for orientation. So, our drivers are back anyway, like doing, you know, practicing their routes and doing things like that. So, we just kind of make little routes. It makes for a little bit of issue with timing, just because the kids think they have to be out, you know, at their specific time, and maybe we're two minutes early or five minutes later, but we just put that out there, and it's worked. So, we've done it for, I think this is the third year, and it went well. I had our drivers aiding for on some of them so that we could have our meeting with the aides, and then the drivers came in after. So, went smooth. And that saves us money and not using them for really, to have two kids on a bus for that day.
Yeah, definitely. Do we have an update on the academy and VOTEC enrollment?
I do. So, Denville, we have four buses that go there. We have 152 underclassmen this year, 64 seniors. We don't bus most of the, we don't bus any of the seniors, maybe two. They have to find their own transportation once their senior year. Two of them couldn't get to CCM. We're the only township that says we'll take them, but if we have room on the bus, we have extra seats. As long as they go by our timeline, we let them get on. So, we have total 170 and, or total 152 and 64. Last year, we had 170 and 60. So, it's gone down a little bit. Morris Hills, we have 75. Last year, we had 80. Morris Knolls, we have two. We graduated four. So, we have, we had six last year. No one knew. Roxbury does have 12, which last year was 10. Randolph has seven, which was six, and Madison has five. Went up by one, it was four.
So, seems like not too drastic of...
No, mostly, mostly it's gone a little bit down. Randolph opened up a little bit of a new program, so they maybe went up by two kids, but other than that, it's either stayed the same or went down a little bit.
Good to hear. Thank you. I know the parents get a guide to transportation, so would you mention about the parent guide to transportation?
Say that one more time.
The parents have a guide to transportation?
So, we have a parent guide to transportation. It is on the website. We update it. Joanie and I go over it every year before the school year starts. It literally has everything you could need in there. Every question you need answered is in there. No one, you know, they usually call first, and I don't just tell them, "Go look at the book." I have had parents this year call and say, "I read this in your book." Sometimes it works in my favor, sometimes it doesn't. But it's in the book. So, if it's in there, we're good. Everything is in there. It's all outlined. There's a table of contents in there, so any questions they have are in there. And it is online, and we do update it every year. So, it's always there.
I'm kind of hoping that they'll come and call you to say thank you for making this transportation book instead of...
You can call me and say that. I would love that. But yes, that's on there. It's been there for a couple of years, and we just update it, you know, every year with, just make whatever updates needed and the administration and whatever, and that's there.
Good. Thank you. Do we have an update on any new bus students from the developments? Because I'm sure everybody wants to know.
So, Joanie made this nice little spreadsheet for us. So, Park has grown greatly. Now, there's only two streets open there so far, two. Park and Willow Lane. There's like maybe 15 in there, all different trees. They haven't opened yet. But just right now, we have 30 elementary kids at Eastlake, one, four special ed students at different elementary schools within the district, one out-of-district special ed student, and one charter student living there, all in elementary school. Middle school there is 11 at Brook Lawn, and three at the Hills, and one at VOTEC in Denville. So, that's grown, it grew over the summer. And then 15, so 1515 Route 10 has three buildings. Only one is open. Oddly enough, that's not 1515, it's 1501, which threw me off completely. So, right now, there are two elementary students there, three middle school students, and two high school students, which I have on STA routes. It's not as easy to get in there. We have to go all the way through Campus Drive to get in. It's like a whole nother world back there. But that's the only way in right now. There is an emergency entrance, but it's only for like fire, police.
I mean, those are the big...
We're not going through there. It's locked, it's locked off. We can't get in. So, we have to go all the way around. So, that is not as full yet. We're picking up right next to that building, but that's the only building open, and I don't know that everyone has moved in yet.
Okay.
Right. I don't think so either. The other two that we have on our list is Avalon, which is Campus Drive, and Cherry Hill Road. They're not open yet. The one at Campus Drive, the architect did call us and ask, you know, "Where do you want?" Which is very nice. "Where do you, where are you going to put a bus stop? Where can we put it?" He gave me a drawing. We picked like a spot that was easier. I said, "Anywhere you want, as long as you don't put like an overhang over it," but no one's there yet. So, we're waiting on that one.
Any issues with, I'm assuming it's always full-size buses or the small buses too?
I mean, depending, I don't really want to, we took a Brook Lawn route back that we didn't need, that I was able to, Lake Par, I don't have any big buses going to Lake Par. So, it depends on where they end up going to school, and I took a Northdale bus back. I don't really want to use those and spend the money. So, if we have room on our smaller buses, and I have a driver, we'll do that for now. But as they get bigger, like I, I don't, I don't want to send someone to 1510, or 1501, or whatever they call it. It's going to grow quickly. And then I'm going to have to change everybody's route. So, I just have the big buses going there now. We pay them, they can go in there. Park, it, it's so big now. In the beginning, I had our bus going there. But now that there's 30 kids there, I mean, it's like being outside here in the morning. There's, it's a full bus, almost full of kids. So, right now, the bigger buses are going. I just added a stop onto the STA route, so.
Okay, thanks. I did get a question about what's the use of GPS on school buses. And I know that we don't use GPSs, but how do brand-new drivers, I guess, how do they learn their routes in a safe and easy way?
So, our routing software gives them directions.
Okay.
So, it does give them directions. I do tell them to check it, because every once in a while, and I don't do it. I drive it through, and it gives it directions on how I told it, and then every once in a while, it has them go in a circle, and I didn't do that. So, we just check it and we go through it. It does give them directions. Most of them know the town, so they know where they are. No one leaves with a route that they've never done before. Everybody practices them, make sure they know where they're going. Our spare people will go out and look where they are and practice going forward, you know, first before they do, they do them. So, if you mean GPS, like for directions...
Well, do people use their own, I mean, they're not allowed?
Some of them, they do. They have like, they have a phone part here they can't use. They just put it on, they don't put the screen on, and it'll tell them. But if that, they use that if they're going on like a trip.
Okay.
They don't use it around town. Most of them know exactly where they're going, and it's not an issue. STA, we don't allow them to use them on their bus.
Yeah.
Because if not, then they have AirPods in. They don't have aides on their bus, and they need to be able to hear the kids.
Right.
So, we don't allow them to use it. So, that's why I give them the routes the week before.
Okay.
And I tell them, "If you have changes, you need to do it the way I gave it to you for the first week. It may not be the way you want it, and I don't have a problem changing it if it works, but I can't change it with the parents."
Right.
So, we do everything the first week, the way that I gave it to you, even if you tell me, "Hey, this is not working," we'll fix it the week after. So, Monday, we made a bunch of changes, and we made some more for the 15th. Just, just things that the drivers, they're the ones out there. So, if they think it works better, and it picks up the kids, you know, in a more efficient way, then we change it. But we just have to do it the way I gave it to them the first week. But they pretty much know where they're going.
Is there any requirement of number of practices that they have to have before, if they're brand-new?
To do the route?
Yeah, like before school starts.
I have them come and, my drivers and like our drivers, I have them come and bring me back their route and sign off that they did it, and that they knew where every place was, that the children are on the right side of the road. You know, sometimes the map, every once in a while, it'll say the house is here and it's over here. I make sure they're on the right side of the road, and I make them sign off on it. And I have a route change sheet. So, if it's something unsafe, we need to change it right away.
Right.
If it's something that you just think works better, then we change it the next week. So, I don't make them do it more than once or twice.
Okay.
But unless they have to, if they feel like more, I have one driver who said, "I just, I'm totally uncomfortable. I want to know where I'm going." I said, "You can come back tomorrow."
Yeah.
And he did it the next day. And he's been fine. So, whatever they're comfortable with, really.
All right. Well, that's all I had as far as the agendas. Open it up for questions from everyone else?
Hello. On Park Q, can you, I got the 30 Eastlake. What were the other updates?
They are, so elementary, like you said, 30 Eastlake. There are four students at different elementary schools in district, special ed students. One special ed student going out of district, and one student in a charter school, in unity charter.
Okay. And Avalon Bay, the one that's, I mean, looks like it's going to open any minute now, but we don't have anything on that, right?
Nobody there yet.
The first floor is open, though. They have...
I thought I saw it was open.
They've got a seal book there.
For the first floor only.
Yeah, okay.
And no kids, clearly.
So, that means it's coming.
We have one call that said they're getting, they were supposed to get there least effective September 1st, but they haven't called back.
Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to ask was, with the changes for buses for like sports and trips and whatever, I know we're at the early part of this thing, but how's that going as far as communications and what the folks need, what you guys can provide? Like, how's that working right now?
You mean, doing our own athletic trips, how we're, how we're getting them done? So, we have, the way that I tiered the routes, we have like, we have five or six drivers in the afternoon to do our trips.
Okay.
Padma's great and found us, a coach at the Hills, who used to coach, who doesn't coach now, who has a CDL. He's now a spare driver for us. So, he'll come over if like we have a trip to Janarone. He'll come over and take the bus over. He'll do the trip in the afternoon for us, which is great. We, we, in the last year and a half, we've hired one bus. We've been able to cover everything ourselves. So, it's working out. The drivers want the work. So, if they want the work, we're good to go. We have sometimes, depending on the time, they're able to drop off, and then a driver that did a route is able to go pick them up and wait for them. It just depends. Like, if the weather's bad, I don't want them leaving them there. So, then we have to kind of work it out. We don't know if it's going to start raining. But if it's nice out, they'll leave them, and then somebody goes back to pick them up. It's, it's been fine. It was fine all the spring. It's working out okay. This, we even do, we've been doing sports trips for VOTEC.
Okay.
Which is great.
Right. Excellent. How about for trips, field trips in general? You know, the best of the ones coming up in the future, like October?
So, I mean, it's the first few weeks of school, so we haven't had anything yet, but we have them. They're all coming in. So, they're all booking up for the summer, and we have people during the day. So, we, we have, when I do route pick, and we have flex drivers, we call them in their contract, so they don't have a specific route. They come in in the morning, they cover if people are out sick, and we need them, and then if nothing, they'll go home for a little while and come back to do a midday. But they stay on to do field trips during the day. So, they're, they're the people that, we try to try and make it the day before to tell them like, "Hey, come in a little later. We have a field trip." Whenever we do that, then someone calls out sick, so I try not to make them come in too much later. But they'll cover everything. So, you know, they, they know that if they sign on to be a flex driver, they don't have a set route. So, some of them don't like that. The others know they get a little bit more time on the clock because they're covering for everyone, and then they're doing field trips. So, there's like a plus and minus to it.
Okay.
We have five of them this year, which is, I mean, other towns are hurting for drivers. Our drivers seem to be happy. We got a few more people asking to come in, so we're good. We're good with that. So, sports is working out. Field trips should be okay.
I guess one, one last follow-up, and then I'll shut up. The question is on the new process we're doing with the field trips. You know, we're, we're asking for some of the finances. Is that process in place? I mean, is everybody aware what the process is?
Go ahead.
We have a letter going out next week, Monday next week, to elementary parents to see what's new for it.
Okay.
And we've updated all our forms so that all the principals and buildings are on board. Most importantly, the head secretaries, who of course run the buildings.
Right.
Who run the buildings.
Great, thank you.
And high school and, and middle school had already done it. So, they know, they know, we had already done it with them.
Oh, okay, good.
It's the addition of elementary.
They know, they follow the process. It's just elementary that we're starting new with. We have a spreadsheet, we share it with the business office, and it works out.
Great. Thank you.
So, once again, you've done a wonderful job. We know that this is not easy. We know there's always going to be things that arise, but you always find a way to navigate them very smoothly. I do want to highlight, we really appreciate your diligence and fiscal responsibility in trying to make a way to save money wherever you can.
Thank you. We're all working it out. It works out. Thank God. So, that's good.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I have one question for you.
Yes.
So, you, you've gone through a lot of wonderful things here, and it's just amazing how smoothly it is all working out. Do you have any concerns that we need to know about?
I don't. No, I don't, I mean...
You could think about it and tell us later.
What?
You could think about it and tell us later.
No, I mean, I, I, we've talked about like the growing number of, of kids, which is why STA, I keep those routes open in case we were to need them. They know that if we have to jump in and say like, "Hey, these are opening up," like, I think that eventually 1515 Route 10 is going to need its own bus by itself. At this point, Park does need its own bus for elementary almost. So, we have them if we need them. But right now, we're good. I mean, we have a great, my team, like our little team works really well. Everybody's there early, there late if we need them. So, we're good. Thanks.
That's great. Good.
All right. Well, like she also said, if you, if you do anything, you just reach out.
Thank you.
So, Tiffany and I have already begun to discuss some opportunities. You know, we spent a ton of money on, on transportation, and we can't look at it year by year by year. We're going to need to look five years out. So, we've already started to come up with some ideas. What can we do? What, what do we want the transportation department to look like in five years, and how can we save money over those five years? So, we're pulling some costs together. During the, the budget window, we'll start to discuss them. A lot of them couldn't be implemented in the first year, but if we're certainly heading that direction, we can start to shift stuff around. But there are, both on maintenance and, and routing our students, there's opportunities on both sides.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
You know, sitting here and telling us all this wonderful news, and thankfully, it is all good news. Very happy to hear it and knock on wood that it stays that way.
Thank you.
All right. So, that finishes our Transportation Committee meeting for Committee of the Whole. We are now up to the Student Safety Data System report. Dr. Mulrooney?
On tonight's bulletin, you will see the SSDS report for the 2024-25 report, period two, which references incidents from January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. This report is a culmination of harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents, substance abuse incidents, as well as incidents of violence, vandalism, and weapons in our 14 district schools. It's important to note that the Board of Education reviews, asks questions, and discusses incidents of HIB and suspensions at each BOE meeting, so they can be proactive and provide suggestions and helpful ideas. While we would like to see zero incidents in our schools, the reality is the district has 14 schools and almost 7,000 students. So, we really do our best to handle these in a tactful, appropriate, proficient, humane manner. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Cora Regesa, Coordinating Supervisor of Guidance and Medical Services, to report on the program for determining grade self-assessment.
Good evening, everyone. Each year, every school is required to evaluate its implementation of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act through its school safety and school climate team. The self-assessment scores shared with you reflect our district's performance for the 24, 2024-2025 school year. Please note that the maximum possible score a school can receive is 78 points. The self-assessment tool is structured around eight core elements, each aligned with specific requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Examples of these core elements include training on policies and procedures, HIB personnel, and incident reporting procedures. Each core element contains several indicators that are rated from a scale, on a scale from zero to three, where two indicates the school has met the requirements, and three indicates the school has exceeded the requirements. I'm pleased to share that all of our schools met the requirements across every single indicator, and in the huge majority of areas have exceeded these expectations. Throughout the year, each school's anti-bullying specialist consistently reviews the self-assessment criteria to ensure compliance and identify opportunities for improvement. One specific example is core element number four, indicator B, which states, "The school observed the Week of Respect during the week beginning with the first Monday in October, recognizing the importance of character education by providing age-appropriate instruction focusing on HIB prevention." So, even though we are only eight days into the new school year, our anti-bullying specialists are off and running with actively planning for the upcoming Week of Respect. Some of the activities will include themed spirit days, classroom lessons, and school-wide contests, all aimed at promoting a culture of kindness and respect. While the self-assessment scores before you are focused on the 2024-2025 school year, I would like to highlight an important enhancement implemented this year. In the past, families signed a HIB awareness form at registration only, outlining the definition of HIB and the investigation process. That practice continues. However, beginning this year, we did introduce a new HIB communication form as part of the required forms in Genesis. The elementary version had to be acknowledged by parents, and the secondary version had to be acknowledged by both parents and students. This form provides clear examples of HIB behaviors, emphasizes the importance of communication, and reaffirms our commitment to creating safe, supportive learning environments for all students. We plan to continue using this form annually to enhance proactive communication and build stronger awareness throughout our school communities. We're looking forward to another great school year here in Parsippany.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on their reports? Thank you very much.
Wendy.
Oh, Wendy, sorry.
Can you maybe comment on what the Hills did so successfully this year to move their score up for?
So, these are very, there, there's a lot of specific ones, so I could have, I would have to pull their report right here to show you. So, sometimes it's just like one little tiny thing that can pull you from a meeting criteria to an exceeding criteria. I have the specific examples, and I can leave that with Joanie if that would be helpful for you, so that you could see the, how they met and moved up in those areas.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Delafave.
Hi, sorry. Can I just ask, so Central's looks like, this is like lower than the other middle school. Is there, and it's been the same for the last two years, based on... Um, is there, and it's been the same for the last two years based on this. Is there a reason why do we know how to, are they working on trying to get their score up for lack of a better?
Yeah, I, I do want to highlight like 73 is still a super positive, solid score. So I know it is on the lower end, right, of our district scores. But I do want to highlight that all of these scores are really high scores and, and exceeding expectations in almost all of the indicators. Um, I would say that though, there was a, a change in personnel.
Okay.
In the building level in Central last year. So many has to transition in and kind of catch up.
Okay, thanks.
Just to reiterate, the max is 78 points.
Max is 78.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Correct, yes.
Is there a score at which like we get flagged by the state?
We haven't been anywhere near it. I've never heard of one and I am sure this is nowhere near it, but I haven't heard of one, yes.
All right, I think we're good.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Is there any unfinished business? Uh, Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes, uh, so I wanted to say thank you very much to everybody who provided feedback for the governance document. Um, uh, we're in the process of incorporating all of that. Uh, so we'll be able to circulate that for the next meeting, so we can take a look at that again.
Okay, and I also did want to report that, um, the, um, ordinance that we sent to the town, I believe in July, we still don't have an update yet for, so I just want to let everybody know that. Was there any other unfinished business anybody wanted to bring? Okay, so now we're up to, oop, committee reports. Uh, Mr. Barrios for policy.
Thank you, Madam President. Policy did not meet, but I wanted to address a couple of issues, my issues, but. One, one's a minor change to the policy, sorry. On policy 5339.01, the student son protection, it's a new policy. Um, there was a word change that we made in it. Um, it was passed by the administration. Uh, Dr. Mulrooney was fine with it and let me pull the policy up and tell you exactly where it is. Um, it didn't change the context of the document. Um, I think it was more of a, made it an easier read. Sorry, Ms. Benos, do you, uh, have it there handy?
I can speak to it. I think it was two consecutive sentences. One, one stated that, um, parents would need to have for written permission for their children to carry sunscreen.
Right.
And then the next sentence kind of, um, was in kind of vague about that responsibility and we made it stronger to say students who have permission are required to, et cetera, et cetera. So we just cleaned up that language, that those two sentences spoke to each other. It was a good catch.
So, yeah, so it looked like everybody, uh, it was, uh, it appears that everybody was in agreement with it. Again, it's, it's a word change, so really it's, it's fine for the second read to go forward unless anybody has an objection to that. Um, so there is one that I'm going to need some input from the board on. Um, so we have bylaw 0143, board member election and appointment. So, um, Ms. Abraham sent an email. Um, well, in the last meeting we had, Ms. Abraham raised a few concerns about the actual bylaw and some of the wording. Uh, email was received mid-week, um, following up on that. So it was reviewed by Madam Attorney. And, um, so after Ms. Abraham raised her concern, um, it was sent back to, uh, Madam Attorney for another review. Um, she got back to us. I communicated with the board president and the rest of the members of the policy committee. And so I wanted to make sure that, A, may give Ms. Abraham an opportunity to address her concerns and then ask the board as a whole, we have two options. We can pull 0143 and bring it back to policy, uh, for a re, essentially a rewrite or an update of the bylaw, or we can just vote on it as is. So, uh, Ms. Abraham, I'd like to have, take the opportunity to, um, speak to your concern.
Thank you very much. Um, and thank you for looking at the emails that I sent, uh, very thoroughly and responding very quickly. Um, sorry that my second response was rather late. Uh, and initially in my email, in my second response, what I was trying to say was that I didn't have an issue with the body of the verbiage. I had wanted to know if we could update the citations on the bottom. And so that's basically the gist of it. And then I did put a number of bullets underneath, giving more clarity. But I am okay with either direction you want to go. I just wanted to clarify that I was not trying to change the substance of the entire bylaw at all. It was just a matter of which citations are appropriate and which citations can go and which ones are inappropriate. And I listed the ones that I thought were appropriate based on the previous conversations I had with our field service rep and she had spoken to the lawyer of the day back then. And I just reiterated all that in my emails once more. And, um, basically I just wanted to know, you know, can we add these citations? And, um, there was a question about one bylaw that I had discussed with our, our attorney and I just wanted clarity about, you were asking me why I put that particular bylaw in as a cross-reference? And it was because there was a statute in there that was only listed in bylaw 151 and that was brought up to me by our field service rep, Charlene. And that's why I included 151, because there's no other place that that statute 10-3 exists. And that's why I included 151. I know 151 is organizational, but I just wanted to tell you, and I clarified that in the email as well, that the reason I mentioned 151 in our conversations were because that's the only place that 10-3 existed. So if that's, you know, it's not a problem if that one is not in there. But I was going on Charlene's, um, you know, advice and, um, that, you know, rather than make it more confusing, just add the citations and move it along. But, um, so I'm okay if you, I mean, if you felt that you wanted to pull it because you wanted to look into it further or take more time, I'm perfectly okay with that. Um, but if it's just a matter of adding citations and that doesn't require a motion to pull it and send it back to policy, then we can vote on it.
So just as a quick update to that, in a quick 10-second conversation before our meeting got started, uh, I spoke to our attorney and, uh, we did say that adding those citations to the current or the updated 0143, uh, does not change the, the bylaw and that we can make that and still go forward with a vote for the second read and then just add the citations, um, as a post, uh, event. But I wanted to make sure that the board was aware and if anybody had objections and wanted us to pull it, I also spoke with, um, Madam President and it really is not going, nothing is happening that if we pulled it to make these type of changes before we do another round of firsts and seconds, uh, we can do that too. I mean, right now, we're, we're not looking at a reorg and hopefully not going, we're not looking to fill an opening anytime soon. So, um, I'll leave that up to, oh, sorry, Madam Attorney.
No, no, I got it. Um, so Ms. Abraham, the, the bylaws, I think you sent your email late, this, this afternoon?
Uh huh.
Um, and it's the bylaws that you put on the bottom of that email that you wanted to include?
Those were, those were the statutes that I linked?
Yes.
Um, in the body of the email, you can, there was a question in there about, um, 145, which I thought needed to be corrected to 140, I'm sorry, 151. But 151 doesn't have to be there, but I thought 145 didn't belong there because it was about resignations.
That's correct. And because I do believe that that's actually an appropriate cross-reference because you're talking about your terms, right? That, that was what the concern was.
Cause that's what went.
And then the term, that term results from the, the resignation. So that's why I did include that. Um, just with respect to your citations.
Uh huh.
Um, the 18A 12-9 is a type one district. That's not us, this is not Persippany. So that's the only one I would say is probably not appropriate to include.
But all the others were okay?
I'm just looking at 1311, I think everything.
1311, I think, was already on, uh, the original version of 0143?
Yeah. Yep.
That one's for a regional.
That's, correct. Yeah, that's, that's the regional school district, which it is or not. So I wouldn't include that either.
Regional, okay.
Cause we're, Persippany's not a regional.
No, of course, yeah. Um.
It does indicate that. It does indicate regional on the current one, but I think for clarity, it would be better if it just wasn't there.
What I would say is just when these come out of Strauss ESME, they put in everything that could possibly pertain to any district that happens to utilize them so they can select, um, you know, between the, the languages. And a lot of times what happens, our boards just kind of adopt that wholesale and don't actually go to look into what those statutory citations are. Um, so when you do, if they're not applicable, right? We took out all the language pertaining to regionals, so we should take out the citation as well.
Can I just ask a question about 13-11? Cause I have it. Um, I'm trying to see where it actually says regional. It just says type two districts.
Correct. It's, so 13-11 is under the section dealing with the regional school districts.
Oh, from the previous, um?
Correct, if you, if you go back.
But are you sure when they put regional district that it wasn't referring to 13-5 or 13-10? Because it's not clear when you look at the, the original version of 143. They just put at the end, regional district, but it's not indicating that it's directly pointing to 1311. It could be that entire line which includes 13-5 and 13-10 too. That's why it's confusing. Because they just put regional, but it's not saying, oh, 1311 is the regional one. They're just saying 13-5, 13-10, 13-11 and then putting regional in the parentheses in the original.
So 13-11 specifically speaks to vacancies in a regional Board of Education. So the.
Based on the, I think this is the one I updated, the one I printed from.
Yep.
The original, okay.
Speaks to specifically regional Boards of Education.
You see how it's confusing because the way they write it? It's because of the way it's listed, that's why.
Which is what we're trying to clear up by just taking out the, the references that relate to regional.
Okay. I mean, I haven't looked at 13-5 or 13-10, so I have no idea if those say regional, but I didn't see that 1311 is a regional.
Oh, that's sealed.
Right, that's sealed.
Yeah, I would not, I would not, again, this is the board's document.
Yeah.
But my opinion is that it could be confusing to someone who is going to pick that up. If that's, you, your vacancy provisions are already out in 12-15. You think that that's what you should, should leave in your policy? Because then somebody's going to pick up.
When they post these as 2024, I know they do have a disclaimer in here that says it could be not the most recent version. But, um, yeah, I mean, I was trying to explain why I would think that it's 1311 would have been because it said vacancies and membership of board and filling, so that's why, but.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, it, it really is applicable to regional.
So 12-15 and then, that was the original one that was already in there.
Uh, 12-11 and 12-15 were the ones that we added. And your add of 18A:10-3 and 18A 12-11.1.
Cause the original 11 was just a couple of sentences and 12-11-1 was more.
So 11.1 deals with new districts when you are creating a new district. Um, so again, if that's what the board wants, that's fine, but that's, that, it deals with the creation of a new district.
Okeydoke. And the statutes then, yeah, those are the, yeah, those are fine.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So I guess it's back from Madam Attorney. So to create new districts, who's to say in a district of our size? Someone says we need to realign the district into multiple districts? For some reason. I'm, I'm just hypothetical, of course, I'm just, you know, but.
Hypothetically, if you were to regionalize or if you were to, um, assume another district underneath you or you were going to split this district into two, there's actually a process to do that. Um, and then you organize as a new board. So you would adopt the policies at the organization meeting of those new boards. Um, and you guys do that at your organization meeting every year. Um, but that's what you, that's what would happen. You'd have to have a new body, right? A new governing body and they would adopt that.
All right, so just for confirmation, then the cross-reference for the bylaw would be 141?
I think 141.
And 145.
And 145 are appropriate.
And then the other statutes with the exception of 13-11 and 12-9.
Well, 12-11.1 is, deals with new districts, so that's, I, I don't.
Oh, no, I was saying, were you taking out 11.1?
The only thing I think I would add to the proposed would be the 18A 10.
Dash three.
10-3.
Okay.
And you can absolutely on second reading, adopt it with that particular change if that's what the board wants to do.
So we don't have to send it for?
You don't have to send it back for just that addition.
I'm okay with that?
Well, that's a question I was just going to ask.
You can have a motion to amend this policy to include it as 18A. Or when you, as amended, right? Your motion would be policy 143 on second reading is adopted with the addition of 18A:10-3.
Okay, then I, Madam President, I believe that Ms. Abraham would then need to make the motion, have it seconded and then we'll all call it.
Do we do that right then?
You would do, you would do that?
Okay.
After the superintendent gives their, their, his report?
Getting too excited.
You would add. And then when there's a discussion, right? You get your motion, uh, there's a motion to approve.
Just let me know. I got there myself. We'll go like this. Just let me know. But thank you so much for indulging me in all of this.
I appreciate it.
And that's all I have.
Oh, Jeff. I hesitated, hesitated to ask.
I wanted to have a turn too.
Okay, I was going to ask.
No, it's, um, on bylaw 0173, duties of a public school accountant, just the first line. I'm just, two suggested changes. The Board of Education shall, instead of cause an audit, require an audit. And then at the end of the same sentence, an audit of the annual financial statements to be conducted as opposed to, to be made. I just think it would read better and it's more, more in line. I mean, I, I have a copy here if you want the changes, Tim.
You said 1570, Mr.?
No, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, it's 0173 bylaw. Duties of a public school accountant. We, we don't cause an audit. Sounds like we caused an accident or something.
Is that like, I think that sounds like a legal term and yours is more.
It's, it's, yeah, I just think it's, just from doing a lot of orders, I think it would be, we require an audit to be done. Not, we cause an audit, to be conducted, not to be made. We don't make an audit, we conduct an audit. Actually, we don't even conduct it. It's conducted by the outside accountants.
Well, then that probably should get pulled because that's changing the content of the bylaw. Oh man, of the, uh, bylaw, yeah.
Would the wording be require or maybe allow for instead of cause and?
The first one, the Board of Education shall require an audit.
And Jeff, I'm sorry, where's the second?
In the second one, in the same sentence.
Yep.
An audit of the annual financial statements to be conducted pursuant to NJSA, blah, blah, blah.
Word made becomes conducted.
Instead of to be made, yes.
So, Mr. Barrios, I would, for the same reasons that we just spoke to.
I have to make a motion that, uh, okay. I have to make a motion that, uh, okay.
Nudge it down the line.
I'll send yours, your second mine.
No, I think those, I think the suggestion, suggestive language does not change the meaning.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it does either. It's- So, so I don't have to make a motion?
You do.
Oh, okay.
I'm writing.
Even though we're not changing the meaning?
Ironically, we're the ones that aren't bound in laws.
If we were changing the meaning, then we wouldn't have to make a motion.
Well, you would to pull it.
No, I, yeah, I'm, okay.
That's good news.
You're not getting out of it either way. Sorry.
See, and we thought that we could get away scot-free with not pulling anything today.
I'll have to bite the bullet and make the motion.
We almost got away with not pulling anything today.
We're not pulling anything.
We're not pulling anything.
He's not gonna pull his either.
Oh, he's not.
All right. Are we now done with the policy theoretic committee meeting? Okay. There was never, uh-
I have a liaison report.
Uh, we still have one more committee report and then I'll ask liaisons. Mrs. Mayor for Human Resources? You're up next.
This was so interesting. I lost my train of thought. Okay, um, human resources met on September ninth, present for myself, Dr. Wright, Mr. DeVito, President Hogan, Mr. Ricker, and Mrs. Benos. Um, we were given retirements and resignation, resignations that were submitted in recent weeks. There were more in the summer than was expected, but they, most of those positions had been filled with long-term subs. Uh, new hires, open positions, principals and supervisors had been interviewing over the summer. There are two postings, but they had, that are still open, but we have qualified substitutes in both positions. Power of transfers. Um, as students move in or leave the district, powers are moved around. That meets the needs of the students and the requirements of the IDPs. Sometimes the powers, it's necessary to transfer them. It just depends on who's, who's got the need at the time. Teacher transfers. This is kind of late. The schools already started where we start transferring. But because of the overcrowding at some of the schools, there was some wiggle room, I guess I can say, where Dr. Mr. Ricker was able to kind of move things around, where let, where people were not, decisions weren't light. And so they were able to kind of juggle things around. And with that, uh, they were able to open up a new second grade at Eastlake, I believe, yes. So it kind of pulls out a little bit of all that crowding. Let's see, uh, the discussion was had about teaching waivers in order to cover sixth period class due to the average, due to the leave of absence or an overage in assignments. And salary upgrades for horizontal movement. Um, they have teachers that have till October first. And there was a lot of discussion about these graduate credits, the programs that teachers are using. And, um, it was Dr. Mr. Ricker, I'm making you a doctor. Was, the, the committee was kind of talking about how some of them are not really accredited. You know, you kind of, it's not really professional. So, you know, they were watching to see where teachers got their credits and really examining to make sure that it wasn't just a chop shop kind of thing. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Mrs. Mayor? Okay, so liaison reports. Mrs. Chappell, do you wanna start us off?
So last night I attended the Educational Services Commission of Morris County. Uh, it was the first one of the new school year. Uh, they've been very busy updating their transportation plans to help accommodate the needs across the county. Almost there, still finalizing some routes, but getting much better. Um, and then the other news to share is that they are in the process of updating their building, doing construction there to help to accommodate the offices and move from other locations so they can centralize into one building. They're actually sectioning off an aspect of the building specifically for the administration so that there's no pass through into the school itself. So they're in the process of that major construction project, but everything else looks good.
Is there any other liaison reports anybody wants to give? Mr. DeVito?
No liaison for it, but I, this morning I was able to attend town hall at their nine eleven remembrance. Uh, Mrs. Hogan was in there and so was Dr. Mulrooney. Uh, it was very well, it was very well, very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and on Tuesday, the Education Foundation had their meeting and they were discussing the fundraisers for the year and that the grant applications for the teachers have gone out. So all the teachers should be applying hopefully for their grants for the Education Foundation. Are there any other liaison reports?
I have a question.
Sure.
PEF met?
Mm-hmm, on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Yes.
We have liaisons for that. And I was not made aware of that one.
That's PEF always meets the second Tuesday of the month, but I will ask them if they will make sure to update the emails.
Oh, Allison, I didn't get the email for that either. I don't know.
I, I don't send the emails. I am not in charge, but I will ask them to make sure that-
Thank you.
Mrs. Mayor?
Just wanted to report that Mrs. Stella Fave and I, we attended the Central Back to School Night. It was very well attended. It was really standing room only and it was packed. So I think, uh, it was just good to see everybody out there really interested in what was going on in the school. And I look forward to the high schools, um, Back to School Night.
Any more?
Yes.
Oh, this is, Dr. Wright?
I would just wanna echo that. I attended Littleton's Back to School Night last night and I really, you know, with the new pre-K, there's a significantly expanded pool, uh, school population and it was very well organized and it was great to see the community out.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I just also wanted to mention about the Back to School Nights. Myself and Ms. Mayor, we both attended the Back to School Night at Brooklawn. Um, as usual, like she said, it was absolutely packed, standing room only. Ms. Stout, of course, explained all the new rules and expectations for the students and parents. As usual, introducing her staff, encouraging questions, discussing the PTA and other topics. I know for me, last year with a sixth grader, I was, it was very overwhelming because it's a lot of information. But this time it was much more appreciated for me because of his consistency. And you all know I like to take notes and discuss my notes and I did take a few just for myself and got teased for it. But that's okay. And then we all went off to our classrooms, got lost as we usually do. And all in all, another great Back to School Night at Brooklawn. And, um, you know, the staff and teachers are always very happy to see us and extremely helpful and we're always grateful for that. And I also attended Littleton last night as a parent and again, also packed. We immediately went into our children's classrooms, enjoyed the discussions with the teachers, saw their work, asked questions. You know, saw old friends and old teachers and everybody in the administrations, you know, always helpful, running around, making sure everybody's okay, answering questions, offering guidance, got a quick look at the new wing in between the sessions and hoping to see it more closely at another time. And also connected with the PTA staff and, um, you know, just wanted to say thank you for all of them for, you know, making it so easy for us. They go out of their way to make sure it's always very welcoming, happy to see us, you know, guiding us where we need to go. And I think that's across the board for all of the Back to School Nights that are always extremely well attended and just very well done. So thank you. Oh, and I had one more though, sorry. Um, also wanted to mention that there was a festival called Ornament that was celebrated on August twenty-sixth to September fifth. And it was a ten-day harvest festival, by the way, this is from India, and a significant cultural celebration in the state of Kerala honoring the homecoming of a king called Mahabali, commemorating the annual return of the benevolent king, a mythological ruler who, who, whose reign Kerala experienced a golden age of prosperity and quality. And his annual homecoming is celebrated by its people with immense joy and enthusiasm. And it is a harvest festival, so people are also giving thanks for their bountiful yield. And, um, certain celebrations that they do is they make floral carpets called poo columns. They enjoy a grand feast called an onasadhye. They do traditional dances and family gatherings and they have boat races made out of snake boat races called vallamgali's. And I just wanted to mention that for any of the South Indian families here that celebrate that as well. So thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs. Mayor.
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody has seen, Brooklawn made a video on, it was hysterical. I don't know if you've all got to see it. The whole staff did it.
That's great.
If you have a chance, I, I guess it's, I don't know, where is it on?
It's on their Instagram.
Yeah, it was, it was absolutely outrageous.
Is you ready?
It was so good. So if you have a chance, you really should look at it. And I think the principal over there did a, well, I agree, she did a phenomenal job. She just knew what she needed to say. It was very appropriate, everything that she told the parents. I, I was very impressed with how thorough she was. But if you have a chance, you've gotta watch that video. It's very short, but it's hysterical.
I had one thing about Central's Back to School Night. I don't know how Brooklawn's been, but, um, the periods were very fast.
Yes.
We barely sat. And I went last, I, I've middle, I've had middle schoolers now for a bunch of years. I don't know what it was, but we were, right, these poor teachers were very prepared and they had maybe three or four minutes. So I don't know, I, it was, this year was super fast. Like they would be cut off before they were even finished and they spoke very quickly. So I don't know if you had that experience at Brooklawn.
No, we were sweating trying to get through to all the classes in a very short-
The passing period seemed okay. It was physically in the room, so I'm, kudos to our staff. They did a great job, but it was, we were, yeah.
Exercising also.
And I think it also goes to, for our parents to have full houses at each of those Back to School Nights really shows what a-
Standing room only.
Right, what an involved community we have.
Every single time.
For our parents who are, who want to meet their teachers. Because that's always very important. So I'm glad to hear all that.
And we do have the high schools next week.
High schools are next week.
Right. And, um, yeah, I did have some thoughts on Back to School, but I wasn't sure if that was part of-
Sure, we just talked about it.
Okay, all right. So just transitioning into some thoughts I had about Back to School Night. I just wanted, you know, we all know that in the last couple of years, um, in the elementaries, the group meeting at the beginning of the night was eliminated and parents just end up going to the classrooms to meet with their teachers immediately. Um, while this is fine, we were also, we as board members were still allowed to attend as board members. And, um, in the past, it was, you know, you're certainly welcome to still attend and walk around. It's up to you. Over the last two years, I would say that about seven to eight board members were still attending all the elementary Back to School Nights, even without children in those schools. And, you know, basically we were given the list of the fourteen school schedules so we can decide where we wanna go and let you know where we're going. And last year also, we were given the full list and I would say about eight or so of the board members were able to attend. This year, you know, we were just given the list for middle school and high school. And I was, you know, kind of wondering about that because I know we don't have the group meetings anymore, but in the last couple of years since we were able to still attend, um, I kind of was wondering, you know, I don't know what the welcome situation is or if that's an invitation process. Cause in my head, I just kind of figured it was, you know, we share the list of dates and schools. We tell Joni or the board president where we're planning to go. And the principal at those schools is made aware that certain board members are planning to attend the Back to School Nights. So I don't think that it was, that we're not able to go or welcome to go. I think it was just that the group setting is not there anymore. But I just wanted to know, you know, you know, what, there was some confusion about it. Because in my mind, I think that having board members attend give us an opportunity to connect with the parents and staff. I personally have never gone into any classrooms on my own. I never felt our presence was a hindrance. I know that there was talk about it being not constructive, but I don't know if there was any examples of it not being constructive or detracting from the purpose. And I don't think that we're looking for long or extended interactions with parents or staff or trying to get in the way of anything. So I was just looking for some clarity as to why, you know, if there was any negative feedback that came back about it in the last couple of years, like I would have been curious to know what that was so we can adjust. And just wanted to know if there, you know, is there an opportunity to make sure that this is communicated better so that we can, moving forward, you know, we know why we're not gonna go or dates are not being circulated. And I also brought it up to the communications chair because I felt that it was part of the board goals. Where we are supposed to be, you know, as, as far as I'm concerned, if we're not communicating and interacting within the, within our means to the community, then, you know, could we be doing more? I certainly did not see it as an issue till now for our communications committee to discuss because up until now, we were going to all the Back to School Nights. I wasn't sure if this was supposed to be an invite only and like I said, like, you know, is it, I don't know what the invite, invitation process is like. Also, you know, going back to the board goal, it also says identify and pursue opportunities for school, community, and municipal engagement wherein each board member will attend or contribute to at least five events. It does not say specifically invited. It also says promote transparency and two-way dialogue with families and community members. I would just like to know how do we propose to do all that, starting off the year on the right foot if we can't engage? And I do believe that, you know, I could have, I would have enjoyed a little bit more of information as to why. Because I do believe that there are board members that believe that elementary schools do not even do Back to School Nights anymore at all. So I would encourage that communication to be clearer. And I spoke about consistency earlier and so I do believe that there should be some consistency so that if things are changing, it doesn't kind of just, you know, come up. And I know, you know, we don't really go around to the schools at all without something going on there or, and obviously the board president and everybody here and the administration would be very well aware where we're going. So it's not like we're trying to go places without communication or inserting ourselves where we don't belong. I'm just saying that, um, I think that the communication could have been, uh, better. I wish we had an opportunity to discuss it. And as far as I know, um, I don't know about the rest of you, but the feedback that I've heard so far is that the staff and parents are happy to see us there. And frankly, many of them have no idea who we are and because they don't see us enough. And I know we have tons of other opportunities throughout the year. I was just making a mention of it because we're at the beginning of the year. We always say, you know, we want more families and parents to come to the board meetings and we constantly talk about that. And when we have an opportunity to say, hey, come to our meetings or catch it on YouTube, you know, these are opportunities. I just want them to know that we're here to help them. I want them to know who we are. I wanna know who they are. And I just felt that this was an opportunity maybe that was missed. And, you know, I want to be able to bring back questions to the board or even just guidance on where to send their emails. This is just the first chance we get in a school year to be visible and friendly. And I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to promote communication and our visibility. And that's basically it. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. I think the board members might speak, but as a former, I'll make, I'll wait till you guys talk and then I'll give you some, I'll give you some feedback from like the trenches.
Mrs. Mayor?
I, I hear what you're saying, but Back to School Night is not for the board members. It's for parents to get to know the teachers and to hear what's available in the building. Now, when they used to have a general meeting before, we used to go and, and sit in and then they would introduce the teachers. We'd, they'd see us there, we'd be introduced. When the teachers go back to their classrooms, they're dealing with parents. You know, a board member really doesn't have any connection there. I hear what you're saying, visibility. When we go to football games or if we go to concerts, if we go to, I don't know, any school function that's really open to everybody, Back to School Night is for the parents, the teachers, and that's really it. A board member, maybe, you know, you might go into a classroom and a, a teacher might be intimidated because you're a board member. You know, you never know. Some people have that kind of thing. I just think we don't belong in that setting. That is not a board, board activity. That is the school's activity for the parents. And that's just my, my thinking. But I, I really do appreciate your thoughts and your, you know, your opinion. But I just think it, it doesn't really add to the evening if we're there. You know, we shouldn't be engaging then. The parents should be engaging with the teachers, not us.
Anybody, Mrs. Nope, Mr. DeVito?
So back in June, um, I seem to recall, we, each of us, when we could, tried to attend each of the moving up ceremonies at each elementary schools. And we're not really engaging that much at, at all. Depending on the principal, what they want us to do, so if we don't hand out certificates- out certificates. That's usually just the principal doing, which is fine. Some allow us to do it, some don't. It's fine. So, that's another example of what you're saying, Mrs. Mayor, of engaging with, with, with parents, and that's just the fifth grade parents. What Mrs. Abraham's point, to, to, Mrs. Abraham's point, this is one of the few opportunities we get to engage, at least be seen by members of the public who have children that are in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. We're not going to see any of these parents for the most part, until their kids are up in maybe the middle school and in this, one of the organized sports, and then in the high school. So, I don't see this as a, as a bad thing to do. I remember doing it back in 2023 at Rockaway Meadow, same thing. They came in, I met them at the door, waved hi, how you doing? Nice to see you. Let them all go to their rooms. I didn't do nothing else. And then I left. So, it wasn't like it was a long, a long thing to do. So, I don't see it as a problem myself. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Chappelle?
So, I do appreciate your point. So, thank you for raising it. And I think the most important thing that I'm taking from you is communication, right? Making sure we have the opportunity to talk about it as a group and agree the approach. So, I hear what you're saying, right? So, I think that's the most important thing to me. With regards to the actual point, though, I, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. DeVito, about, you know, being there, making sure they know that we are present and that we, you know, attend these events. I unfortunately had the experience of being at an event, at one of the, at one of the back to school nights last year, and I was there with Dr. Sutter. And we were definitely a distraction. We were definitely a stopping point, where we were delaying people getting into the school. We were distracting the principal, where he needed to be in a different place, and he was talking to us. And we had people focusing on helping us know where to be, as opposed to managing the event. So, I unfortunately had the experience of being a distraction, and it made me feel terrible. Because to your point, Mrs. Mayor, you know, I know this is about the parents connecting with the teachers, so the teachers can share with the parents what's going to happen in the classroom, what they can expect, and, you know, make sure that any questions they have are addressed. So, I just wanted to share my experience, because I did have a negative experience, and it was really bothering to me.
Is there anybody else? All right. The only other thing I was going to add is, I completely agree with the communication, which is why we sent out another communication. And obviously, you know, that could have been done earlier. We did send one out last week, mentioning the elementary back to school night, so this was not the first time that it was mentioned. And nobody is saying that it would be a bad thing for board members to attend. You said yourself, there was no indication that anybody was forbidden to go. So, you know, I just want to make sure that that was clear, that nobody, I would not think it's a bad thing. I do agree with Ms. Chappelle. Last year, I was a distraction for sure. So, the intent was not to prevent anybody from going into a school. And the point about communication is absolutely, you know, well taken. Dr. Maruni, did you want to, as a school principal, just?
Briefly. I don't, I don't, I don't deny the fact that, Matt, it's a nice opportunity for you to connect with a handful of people. But I would say that the vast majority of the people there are just so hyper-focused on talking to their kids' teachers, and you might connect with one or two. And I think, and I don't think that's time poorly spent. But as a principal with parents of six, 500 parents coming in, it's one more thing to worry about, is having a board member there and making sure you have a spot, making sure you were there, and I said, that I say hi. And as much as you'll say, go, go, I know you guys, go, go. It's not that simple. You know what I mean? And they're still going to worry about you, and the teachers are going to, they're going to be concerned. And I think when there's a large assembly meeting, I think that's much more appropriate there, because people are gathering, and they're mailing around. You get to talk to people then, and you see people even seen forever, and get introduced to, to the crowd. Who cares about that? But get introduced to people like in a real human context, that's nice. But on those nights, I think it's best to let the parents come in. There's a reason why we got rid of that general meeting too, so we can get the parents in the room with the kids, with the teachers, to talk about what's happening in that classroom. So, that's, that's just my perspective. I see your, your points, but from the other side, as much as, as gracious as you guys will be, I mean, they're always going to, they're always going to be worried about you, and wanting to make sure you're, you're taken care of, and you know, and things like that. So.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? I don't think that we had clarity on why, I mean, I know Dr. Maruni just touched upon it, but why the group meetings were stopped two years ago? Was it just because of timing or space constraints, or?
A lot of times, it's parent feedback, to be honest with you. In my time there, you'd have the big meeting, you'd think it was so important, and so many parents would skip that meeting. And I, and I know as a parent, when my kids are in elementary school, I, I came after the meeting, because you hear it once, you know, you're all very much as primary students, and a lot of things could be communicated in other ways. So, it just got, it got more time in the classroom, and it was a lot of parent feedback, and just being observant.
Thank you. And, you know, I can't speak for anyone but myself, but I have never gone out of my way to go into anyone's classroom when I'm not supposed to do that. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that is absolutely not happening. And I have full confidence that nobody is doing that, or trying to go out of their way to make anybody nervous or upset, or.
Your support groups are people who crash back to school nights. If anyone needs, I can hit the number. No, of course, either. We understand.
I just love him so much.
All right. I did a little bit feel like I was crashing the music room. You know, the specials teachers are there, but they don't usually, they don't have a specific program. But my daughter had a particular funny interaction with her music teacher in the first week. And there was like, you know, she's seven, so she was very confused about a few things. It's very cute. But so, I went to just check in and had a delightful conversation with an empty room and two music teachers. So, they were, I think, appreciative that I was there.
The jackpot, right?
Yeah.
Can I just say one last thing? I'm so sorry. I just want to say thank you for everyone, for giving me this time to say what I wanted to say, and also giving me your feedback and your experiences. Definitely eye-opening. I would, you know, Ms. Chappelle, Ms. Mayor, everybody, Dr. Maruni, Mr. DeVito as well. And, you know, I just, the way, the way Mr. DeVito was saying it too, like, graduations are also for parents and their kids. Unless you really do want to hand out diplomas, you really, I'm talking about mainly fifth grade. But, you know, so to me, it was not a big distraction. But I just wanted to say thank you for everybody's feedback, and, you know, I appreciate clarifying a lot of these things. Thank you.
Okay. Well, move on with our meeting to the approval of minutes for the regular and executive minutes of August 21st, 2025. Can I have a motion for those minutes, Mr. DeVito? And a second? Dr. Wright, roll call?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We have two motions.
Not now.
We will tell you.
Not now.
Roll call though on the minutes?
Mrs. Abraham? Regular and executive minutes of August 21st.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rayah?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Now, we're up to the superintendent's bulletin, number three. Dr. Maruni?
Yes.
Okay, everyone. So, as I, as I told you earlier, school's underway. It's after a lot of summer meetings. It's great to see the teachers and students back. Fall sports are, have commenced. Games have started last week, and we're excited for all the great things our students will accomplish. As far as interesting news or news of note, August 21st, we had our annual STEM pathways kickoff for incoming ninth graders. That was held up at Persia High School in the meeting center, and there were multiple STEM activities led by Rutgers University. We had 119 students from both high schools who opted to attend. Students engaged in hands-on, inquiry-based activities that encouraged divergent thinking, including small group collaborative challenges, that culminated and created product lines and presenting them in a Shark Tank-style format. Our STEM pathways advisors were in attendance as well, and it's a great start to the year. This is year five, I believe, of STEM pathways. Our two new pathways, visual performing arts humanities, are beginning this year with smaller cohorts of students, but we're excited for the opportunities that will afford our kids and the paths that will lead them down. Tonight, for your approval, we have superintendent's bulletin items one through 39, and addendum items 40 to 65, and we got some read-ins.
Are there any questions on the superintendent's bulletin? Mr. DeVito?
No, it's just a comment. You mentioned about the STEM pathways, and 119 of those kids attended. One was my son, and he really had a, had a great time. And just out of, out of that, how of the overall number of kids in the STEM pathways, how, what was percentage? Ballpark, if you know.
No, it's, I can get ballpark. It's massive. We, we do applications in the winter, and we do a lottery system. So, we're looking at about 100, 120 each, each year. So, you know, close to 500 students, nine to 12. And we, since we've added the new pathways as well, students will be able to do dual pathways, but only VPA with either humanities or VPA with STEM, just because the stress it puts on their schedule. But it's a massive program, and.
No, I was, I guess I didn't clarify my question. I'm sorry. Of the number in ninth graders coming in that are going into STEM pathways, what was the percentage?
Oh, that's probably about half of them. Close to half, 50%.
About 200 is our total this year? Okay. That's what I thought.
Which is good for August 21st program, vacations and stuff. It was good.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify that the programs, the pathways that are starting, you start in ninth grade? Like, you're not starting?
It's just freshman.
500 kids at once. You're starting the ninth graders and growing up?
Yep.
Okay. That was my understanding. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on the superintendent's bulletin? Okay. Secretary's report, Dr. McHugh?
Well, if you look at the bulletin, that's the business section, you'll notice that the business administrator report, secretary report, and treasurer's report is not there. We're going to have that at the next meeting, when the process of closing last year, to get the ending balances, so we can roll over the, the big ending balances. But one item I did want to point out is item number 39. That's our ESEA grants, or commonly referred to as the titles. This was the one we were sweating. We weren't sure what the state was going to do, if it was going to come out at all, and if we were going to get our money. And in fact, we wound up with just under $900,000, which was an increase. So, we, we were very happy, since we spent a lot of that money already. So.
All right. Do we have any questions on the secretary's report? All right. I don't believe there's any new business. I believe we've discussed everything, except Dr. Wright is raising her hand.
I just wanted to make a reminder that the Morse County Regional NJDSA meeting is coming up on October 7th. Just want to put it, everyone, that's always a great meeting. Put it on.
And the legislative committee meets next weekend, and I will be going to that one, in case anybody wants me to listen for something specific at that legislative meeting. Okay. So, now we're up to hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful, if you would like to address the board, please come up now and sign in, so you are ready for when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you're a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to by law 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Welcome.
Hello, Adam Marks. Two things. One, my daughter is on the volleyball team at the high, and I brought this up, I think, last year as well. The ventilation in that gym is horrendous. It is very hot. I know they put fans in, but the fans are not allowed to be on during games. There's no air. You can also attest this. Your daughter's there too. It is really bad. So, I was just wondering, I know, I think at the Hills, we were just there, they had fans, there's cages on the fans, and so they were able to be running during the game. Just wondering if there's anything that could possibly be done, because that gym is, kind of gets unbearable, especially in the summer. The second thing was just around the buses. Somebody mentioned it on the earlier part about like GPS using, I guess, for driving around. It'd also be interesting if there's an opportunity to get GPS tracking for parents. Like, I know my son went to camp, and the buses all had GPS. We could track him on the phone. They use a whatnot app. I mean, there's lots of different ones that can be used. But they have the technology. It might be great, especially in the morning. Our bus stop, you can't always see the bus from our house. So, just knowing, has the bus come? Has it left? Is it being delayed? This might be a good option to have, especially if they already have phones and they have apps that do it. I wonder if that can be incorporated in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. So, I will close the public session, and we will be up to the roll call vote on superintendent's bulletin number three, items one through 20, one through 39, with addendum items 40 to 65, and read-ins. I think we need the motion to accept this, to vote on the superintendent's bulletin, and then the motions to alter it.
Need a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Mr. DeVito and Dr. Wright?
Discussion.
Now, we do the discussion.
I have a motion. I have a motion to amend, or on second reading, the policy 0143 to include the legal statute citation 18A, colon, 10 dash 3.
You need a second?
Thank you.
Mayor? Is there any discussion on that? I believe we've had discussion on that, but let's make sure.
You need to, let's vote that motion first.
Can we have a roll call vote on Mrs. Abraham's motion?
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rayah?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe, Mr. Rayah, you would also like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend bylaw 0173, just a couple of edits in the first sentence.
Which do not change the meaning of it.
It does not change the meaning. It, it just tightens it up.
Is there a second for Mr. Rayah's motion?
Second.
Mrs. Chappelle? And I believe we've had, that, everybody's comfortable with the discussion we've already had on that one. Okay. Can we have the roll call vote?
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Delafave?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rayah?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Now, we need a roll call vote on the bulletins as amended by the two motions. Yes, can we, we do have the motion and the second, so we can just do the roll call?
That's right.
On the actual bulletin.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Recuse on number 47, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Delafave?
Abstain from reading page three, number four, and then yes for everything else.
Mr. DeVito?
Recuse on number five, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Mayor?
Recuse on number 28, yes on everything else.
Mr. Rayah?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
All right. There being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mrs. Abraham? Is there a second? Mrs. Delafave? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.